I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Item D is items for the good of the city and there are no items for the good of the city tonight. That sounds funny, but we all know what we're talking about. And item E is public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council members on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council members on an item listed on the agenda if a speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. Is there anyone here this evening who would like to address the council under public forum? Okay, I have no speaker cards and hearing none, we will close public forum. Item F is our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion, unless a council member or a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as proposed?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also passes unanimously. That brings us to our item G, public hearing. We do not have a public hearing tonight and so we will move on as quickly as I think we've ever moved on. The policy matters, item H. So our first item is to consider amendments and adopt City Council Policy and Procedures Manual and the recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 50-24, Adopting the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual. And I think we have a staff report on this.
We do. I'll have Sherry go ahead and get started on that.
So Mayor and council members, on an annual basis, the City Council reviews its policies and procedures manual. And this year, as in prior years, but a little bit more extensively this year, the City Manager, City Attorney and I met to discuss the proposed changes that we would recommend. Some of them are relatively minor, others are worthy of council discussion. I won't go through all of them because they're all listed in the staff report, but we're happy to take any questions on individual items that you may need clarification on.
Okay, thank you, City Clerk. Do we have any questions from the council? None? Okay, then I will open, anything else from the staff report before we? Okay. Then I will open public comment on item H1 and I don't have any speaker cards. Are there any members of the public here that would like to comment on item H1? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Thoughts on the amendments to the Policy and Procedures Manual? Anyone?
I'll jump in. I thought the staff report was very clear and comprehensive and that the changes were not only well thought out, but well explained and I would be prepared to adopt these as recommended.
Thank you. Any other commentary on this? Okay, the one thing I did want to talk about is I know that we have 2.1.3 ending time. I know that it is our practice to have unanimous support when we're, or to, you know, to have our current practice of specifying an end time when we continue a meeting past 10:00 PM. I do feel like there are times that we do that often and it maybe takes more time to do it. It does keep us on track. So I have mixed feelings about it and it is something I would like to, when this comes back to us next year, just continue to revisit, right? Whether it's efficient or not. I think it does make us more efficient, but I also feel like sometimes, you know, we do extend it a lot. It's not, it's not, it's not as, it's somewhat typical to me. So I just didn't know if folks had ideas on that. I don't know whether it made sense to extend it to 10:30. I'm not following you. I feel like there's a lot of meetings that go past 10:00 PM and does it make sense to extend that time to 10:30 before we need to have a motion?
You mean the official end times 10:30 instead?
Yeah.
Well, maybe wait a couple years.
I'm fine with revisiting it next year. I just wanted to throw it out there.
I appreciate you bringing it up and I would like to revisit it in the future, but I feel like right now it's okay.
Okay, fine. Any other discussion or commentary on item H1? Okay, then I will move to adopt Resolution 50-24, Adopting the City Council Policies and Procedures Manual with the amendment suggested in the staff report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much to our City Clerk, City Attorney and City Manager for all the hard work that went into this. That takes us to item H2, which is our City Council Meeting Schedule for 2026. And the recommendation is to review, amend and adopt the City Council Meeting Schedule for calendar year 2026. And do we have a staff report on that?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, this one's pretty self-explanatory. We were trying to come up with the schedule for next year. One thing that we noted, let's see, we have a typo in here on 2025. The first meeting of January, we were suggesting perhaps not meeting because we're just coming back from the holidays and staff reports would be due like mid-December in order for us to make that date. So we were suggesting one meeting in January. You'd have your additional council commission interviews in February. The National Night Out, again, no meeting on that evening. And then for the election cycle, proposed a Monday meeting instead of a Tuesday meeting. I would suggest alternatively, if you wanted to still continue a Tuesday meeting, we could start early. We could start at 5:30 and try and get you done by seven so that you could be out and doing whatever you needed to do for election night. So that's the schedule as we've proposed it and happy to see if there's any other modifications that the council would like to see to the meeting calendar for next year.
Thank you. Any questions from council members about this?
I guess my only question is, I thought we had a lighter schedule in December as well. Are there any concerns that we might need to potentially do a special meeting if the, if the agenda is active over that December-January period? Is that potentially too many breaks? If you're comfortable with calling a special meeting if it's needed, I'm comfortable with the proposal, but I wanted to at least discuss it.
Yeah, that's fair. In December of next year, your meetings nights would be December 1st and December 15th. Did I just read that correctly? I think it's December 1st and December 15th.
Was your point that this December may be a lighter? Because we have to take a break from sort of mid-December. The second and the 16th. The second and the 16th, so we will, between those two meetings, I don't think we'll have anything. The 16th tends to be more ceremonial.
Yes.
And so that means we will have, in terms of substantive, you know, a heavier business meeting would be December 2nd and then we're taking, the next scheduled regular meeting is January 20th. That's what you're raising.
That's correct. And another thing we might consider is just a second meeting in January that isn't on the 6th. So maybe like the 13th and the 20th, which is a little back-to-back, but they might be...
That was the only, we thought about that too, like whether or not we could squeeze in two meetings, but we could certainly be flexible if we find ourselves with a meaty set of items that need to get addressed. If the council's open to a second meeting in January, we would probably prefer it being later than right after, but potentially.
I would recommend if you're wanting a second meeting in January, to go ahead and put it on the calendar and then cancel it later because then it would be a regular meeting as opposed to a special meeting. Regular meetings are the meetings where you can adopt ordinances.
Correct. I mean, okay, okay, I guess we're still in questions, but that's helpful. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, I will open public comment for item H2. Are there any members of the public that wish to give public comment on this item? Seeing no speaker cards and hearing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Any comments, thoughts?
Just looking at the calendar.
My preference would be to have that January 13th meeting, regular meeting canceled and then if it's not needed, I mean, scheduled and if it's not needed, it can be canceled later. But I'm fine with moving it to the second week. I think that makes a lot more sense.
I've already scheduled a trip relying on the first and third week. So I prefer the fourth week instead of the second because I already am going to miss three meetings with my trips to New York.
Okay.
But my concern about that is that doesn't solve the problem of the gap between December 2nd and the 20th? Or the, yeah, December 2nd and January 25th. So the concern wasn't so much the amount of business as the gap in time. And so, so, and then we'd have three in a row if we did that. So I don't want to be dismissive of your schedule, but I would worry that we don't accomplish the goal if we went 20, 27 and three.
What's the matter with January 6th? Like a regular first and third Tuesday?
Runs, I suspect it would run into a lot of different, if staff is like varying holidays or...
We would have to prepare an agenda for that meeting in, by December 17th.
I see, so the second, I see, okay. But if we moved it later that week, like the 7th or 8th, did that give you time if you came back on Monday? Is 72 hours, right, to post?
Well, I think if we move away from Tuesdays, we might run into other meetings, like the first Thursday of the month is the Mayor's Conference, Contra-Cross County Mayor's Conference usually and Cal Cities does meetings on Thursdays. So I feel like sticking with Tuesdays makes sense, except for the Election Day, which we always historically, I think, have moved to the Monday. So that makes sense. So I don't have a... I mean, I would favor scheduling a regular meeting on January 13th during that break and then ideally we don't need it and then we can cancel it. But if, that way it's there if we need it.
We'd be open to doing that. We just need that time after the first of the year to make sure we get everything in that needs to be in.
Now I understand, I'm sorry, didn't...
That's okay.
So that week, I think that's a good...
I would support that and because we're all having this conversation here, staff understands that you don't need to load up the 13th. It's there if we just have a lot of business to get done or there's something that is getting timed.
Okay. All right. Any other feedback on the schedule? The rest of it looks fine to me.
The first meeting of, the only one I noticed last year you made an adjustment to was the first meeting in April. We didn't propose that this time. It falls after, I don't know when the break is for school here. I don't know if that matters for you guys.
Usually the week before.
I've actually got it, so hang on.
Just want to make sure we're accommodating spring break. Our meeting would be April 7th.
You know what? I didn't write it down, so then it's going to take me too long.
I saw it, it was like March 30th for spring break.
Perfect. So we, not a conflict.
Okay.
So I will say that is my kid's spring break, so I will likely send somebody else from my law firm to cover that.
The week of the 6th is your spring break.
Yeah.
It was on discount.
And I think that is noted and can absolutely be happily accommodated, so. Any, so aside from adding a regular meeting on January 13th, any other proposed changes? Okay, if there are no other proposed changes and no other discussion, do we have a motion to adopt the City Council Meeting Schedule for calendar year 2026 as detailed in the staff report in item H2A with the addition of a additional regular meeting on January 13th, 2026?
I'll move that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Oh, can I also just request that we get a digital copy of this with the final?
Sure.
Thanks.
And we just had two people second at the same time, so I'm just going to say, for the record, we'll note that Councilmember Hoxsey seconded that.
That's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that also passes unanimously. Thank you. And that takes us to item H3 on our policy matters. And that is the selection of two council members as labor negotiators for the position of City Manager. And my understanding is that is needed because we are coming up on nearly a year with our new City Manager. He's no longer our new City Manager because it's been a year. So I don't know if you want to address that or who's going to address?
I just need two members of the council to volunteer their time to talk with me and meet with me about any discussions around labor negotiations with me, any changes or amendments to the contract.
And so we need to, we just need to appoint two members.
You need to appoint two members amongst you.
Anyone want to volunteer? I mean, I'd be happy to help with it again, but also I'm happy to let others.
I will volunteer since you and the Vice Mayor did the tough negotiations with our City Attorney.
I can join you. Okay, okay, so then Councilmember G and Councilmember Riley have volunteered. So I will move to select Councilmembers G and Riley as our labor negotiators.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I forgot to call public comment on this, so before, I'm going to withdraw that motion and I apologize. And before we act, I would like to call public comment on item H3, selection of two council members as labor negotiators. act, I would like to call public comment on item H three, selection of two council members as labor negotiators for position of city manager. Don't see any speaker cards. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Okay, hearing none, I will close public comment. And after that, I want to reopen for council discussion, just to be clear. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Okay. In that case, I would like to move that Councilmembers G and Riley be selected as labor negotiators for the position of city manager.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that now passes unanimously. Um, that takes us to item I, which are council member reports. Do we have any reports?
We had a school two by two. Um, would you like me to talk about it or? Uh, we talked about um the crossing guards, which were um really, really got apparently quite a bit of positive feedback from parents and people in the school communities. There was um a lot of of people reaching out and saying how happy they were to see that happen. So I just wanted you guys to know that that was uh that was very appreciated. The Wagner Ranch Nature Area negotiations continued to go well and the goal of getting that into uh some sort of land trust and then having the schools portion become part of a curriculum using the public dollars, all proceeding according to plan. Uh, and then we got a fields update. Uh, nothing really newsworthy there, other than they wish they had more money to upgrade the irrigation, which, you know, is somewhere in their C I P budget and not imminent. Is there, did I forget any of our?
Just the discussion over the e-bikes and wanting to have education and discuss possible enforcement after there's an education campaign for parents to understand what the rules are around e-bikes. I think we can bring it back to talk to particularly the middle school, you know, work with the middle school to come up with some sort of parent education night, maybe involve the police chief, come up with some plan so that we can start addressing concerns that have been raised by the public, the schools community about the safety of e-bikes.
Okay, what what was the uh, so the schools were saying that? I'm sorry, who was going to do the education around?
It was a member of the public had commented, and we mutually talked about our awareness that there are some new laws about you know, that you can't buy a bike of a certain speed for a younger kid. You can't modify bikes. And I just, I think both we at the city and they at the schools have heard complaints about over the summer, how many kids weren't necessarily wearing helmets for the speeds they were going. And so that was really mostly for the schools to take back and to try to do more education. And we made them aware that we are also on an ongoing basis, you know, looking at the bike road trail program. We're looking at the safe routes to school. Uh, and so that's a topic that whenever we have our two by two, uh, we're just going to keep talking about things like where is there the most demand for capital projects or T S A C dollars and attention?
We talked about crosswalk issue on Coral, safety issues on Coral.
Okay. Thank you. And then I I had a question about the school two by two. Was there, did the, did the superintendent or or, you know, I guess, school board members express any thoughts on the and tell me if this is a question I can't ask about this, but about the no left turn on Ivy. I'm just asking what they, not asking for discussion. I'm asking for what the.
There was a member of the public at the two by two who raised that concern about um safety, uh, both to Delray Elementary, because their concern was if they can't make a left, more traffic is pushed towards Delray, which starts at eight A M. Before people then make the left at Coral to come back to the school. Um, and then again, the safety on Coral, uh, because there's no sidewalk from, you know, is it Artith down to Maraga Way? So those were things that we discussed at the two by two.
And did the school board members?
The school superintendent said that their official position is they don't want the sign there. And she felt that the police chief had, was of the same opinion, and it was a public meeting, and that's what she said there. The school's position is on the matter.
Okay.
And that's as the, you know, the person responsible for O I S and Delray was the context in which she made that statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Those are all two statements. I don't think the chief, her mentioning the chief was inconsistent with staff's recommendation, which was to remove the left turn uh restriction.
Okay. Any other council member, any other council member reports? Okay. I I am, I know we're going to hear from my city manager about this, but I just want to thank publicly our city manager and um, you know, our state electeds. Our assembly member Rebecca Bauer-Kahan and her staff and and our um Senator Tim Grayson and his staff for really, really going to bat for us on S B seventy-nine. I'm going to let the city manager give you the substance report, but but um, you know, we are very lucky for all the work that our city manager and has put in, and our regional partners, Lafayette. Lafayette's mayor, Susan Candell, and their and their city manager as well have been really instrumental in moving the needle forward. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was a definitely a team effort. The City of Lafayette and the City of Arinda worked very closely together to coordinate a message for both Senator Grayson. Senator Grayson was kind enough to have us sit down with members of the Senator Weiner's team of supporters to kind of explain to them our concerns around S B seventy-nine. And we suggested uh different ways to mitigate those concerns uh with respect to the bill. And uh ultimately, as of today, last Friday was in appropriations. There was a readout on appropriations that it was going to be amended. And it 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 wasn't very specific at the time as to what those amendments would be. It mentioned that they would be around tier three designations. But as we learned today, later this afternoon, that those tier three designations have been removed entirely from S B seventy-nine. Contra Costa County would fall into that. So it wasn't, it wasn't just a victory for Lafayette and Arinda. It was a, it was a victory for all of Contra Costa County to allow their local agencies to do proper planning around those Bart stations and transit stops that make sense, that are consistent with their housing element and sort of meet local standards for development. So uh very happy about the outcome and very appreciative to Senator Grayson for putting out a lot of political capital to get that work done for us.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think we're really appreciative. And and thank you again, city manager, for all your work in that behind the scenes, because it was a lot.
Casey from Townsend was very involved in all of these conversations as well.
So, yeah, so that point about getting getting legislative representation has really been helpful. And anything else with your city manager's report?
Yes, um, just really briefly, I was going to mention S B seventy-nine. I also today got um a list, which I haven't had a chance to review yet, from Casey from Townsend on all the other pieces of legislation that made it out of appropriations. So I will go through that list and I will send you in my weekly update where we stand on certain bills and whether or not they made it out or didn't make it out. Uh, and then we'll move towards uh preparing for the floor votes and getting our messages out to the legislatures on the members on matters that we still wish to either support or oppose. So we've done a a series of legislative letters before they went into appropriations, and now we will do another set for the floor. And then depending on which ones get through the floor, we'll do a set to the governor uh on our positions on certain bills that will make it to his desk. So that's coming up. Uh, I mentioned in my weekly email to you last week, which I thought was very exciting, is the police, Arinda Police are going to have their first ever Citizens Academy, which I think is a nice step forward in getting more community engagement with the residents around public safety. It'll be a nice learning opportunity to get a sort of a peek behind the curtain about how things work in police departments and um hopefully we'll get many members of the community signed up to take advantage of that great program. Um, I've been involved in them in other jurisdictions and they're really wonderful. And I think the community do certainly appreciate getting to see uh what what all goes into policing in a community. So that is coming up, and I think that is my report. And I think I've, I'll be out of the office starting Thursday for the rest of the week.
Okay. Um, and I I sort of skipped over earlier. I didn't mean to. Were there any other council member reports? No? Okay. There was one meeting I attended, I just want to briefly, it was a Cal Cities meeting on the very high fire severity zones and the whole process. And uh, we are not the only jurisdiction, needless to say, that is was frustrated with both the maps themselves and the lack of like transparency on a more detailed level about how those categories and maps were drawn. You know, there was a general, I was, I was pretty impressed. Everyone, there was a lot of attendance from around the state, from other jurisdictions, and um, you know, everyone seemed to have a lot of information and understand the criteria that's publicly available, but also how that was implemented was a mystery to a lot of us. And then the process itself was also critiqued by many. I didn't feel like we had that much of a critique of the process here because I felt like there was a, but there were a lot of cities that were also complaining about, you know, not sort of being aware of the changes until after certain deadlines to comment had passed. And Cal Cities indicated that they would, you know, take that information on and pass it along and, you know, really advocate for more transparency the next time these maps are drawn. A lot of people also brought up insurance during the call, so I just wanted to share that.
And then we had our meeting today?
We did. And so we um, we met with the governor's office of external affairs because they requested a meeting, so, um, which I guess they lasted in twenty twenty-three. And so we shared with them, um, before we knew about the amendments, um, our concerns about S B seventy-nine, that was a big, you know, we we expressed a lot how we really want to, you know, encourage development, but do it in a way that allows for emergency preparedness and evacuation and that those can, that, you know, climate change and the realities of it and what it's, the burden that it it has on our community and being able to save lives is really important. Um, we made, I mean, it was an introductory meeting. We made a pitch for funding, of course. And, you know, emphasized that although we are not technically an underserved uh community, that to the extent that we would um experience, um, you know, anything that would require needs, you know, those funds and resources, for example, the resources used in Palisades, take away from underserved communities throughout the state because of encompassing a lot more. What um we discussed,
Caltrans.
Caltrans and getting involved in Caltrans. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, so we, we talked a little bit about um the two areas where housing could be appropriate in the community and how that's owned by Caltrans. And some of the hurdles we've run into with Caltrans over the discussion over the site off of Highway twenty-four. And then the Bart site itself, uh, tearing off of information that Sean and I have been discussing, you know, whether or not they need to be encouraged to be more of a thoughtful partner in helping us come up with ways in which we can work towards building housing on those locations. So um, they said that they, that request is pretty commonplace. They have a very good working relationship with District Four. And um, because the new head of Caltrans is from District Four. So uh, more to come on that, but we will take them up on that offer. And then we also inform them about our application, our M O F D's application for the North Shaded Fuel Break that we need to read, you know, basically re-invest in that fuel break. And so we're waiting to hear back from the state about the grant that M O F D has put in to make that um improve that area. So that's the update on the Caltrans.
We also did mention the P G N E lines in uh Arinda Village and how they're a real impediment to development and building housing, which is a priority of the governor's. And finally, we, what did we? They are based in the San Francisco um and in the Bay Area, these representatives. And so it's great to have those open lines of communication, I think. Especially with state agencies. I think it can be helpful.
It was a good meeting.
Yeah, it was. I think any other reports from staff?
I'll just mention one more thing. It's that the private road owner questionnaire is wrapping up, and we um did get a fairly substantial response. And even in the last week, I think there were some community groups that had reached out to get more people to follow up. So we have been manning and dealing with those on an ad hoc basis as they come in. They're sending emails in. We're giving them their codes to take their surveys. So hopefully we'll have a very good turnout. We'll bring that back to the Infrastructure Committee at its next meeting.
Okay. And when is the time limit for that? Has that passed or?
It is, we're trying to close it down this week. It's been out for about um three and a half weeks.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, then we will move to matters initiated. Um, are there any matters initiated tonight? Hearing none, we'll close matters initiated. Um, and with that, the next special city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you. Wow.